And let to be liked. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the briefing meeting for the school district of Lee County School Board members. We are beginning at 2:22 PM. On today's agenda, we have the following. Under a board member presentation, we have the FSBA Greater Florida Consortium School Board Proposed Constitutional Amendment Position Resolution. Under Executive Services, we have, we're going to be reviewing a final recommend, moving forward, of Policy 2.04, Campaigning on School District Grounds. We will, there will be discussion on new and district websites. We will be discussing Lee County athletic transitions and changes for the year 2018, 2019, as well as our assessment calendar. Under Operations, there will be a safety update, major capital project update, as well as a change order report that has been submitted. Following that will be public comment, and then board comments, and the good of the order, and adjournment. And Ms. Morgan, are you going to be the one presenting the resolution for us?
No, I assumed it was Ms. Patrica. I didn't even know it was on the agenda. I thought it was only on for tonight.
And it says, "Presenters Kathleen Morgan."
It does?
Yes.
Oh. I don't know why, but, okay, so I assume everybody's read it.
Yes.
Essentially what it means, the consortium would like to go forward with the resolution. They need the approval of all participating school districts in order to do so, and so I guess we are looking for us to have a brief conversation about whether or not we want to go ahead and support this resolution opposing Amendment Eight, the constitutional amendment Eight. So...
Could we ask Mr. Dotting for a little?
Sure.
Sure. Board members, the amendment proposes to amend really three sections of statute, or of the Florida Constitution, excuse me. The first provision of Amendment Eight involves term limits, and it limits a person to eight consecutive years of service on a locally elected school board. The second provision is a civic literacy provision, which would amend the Constitution to require that civic literacy be taught in public education. And the third is, the third provision is a language change that would essentially create the ability for other entities to authorize public schools in Florida. So those are the three constitutional changes that would be made if the amendment were to pass by 60 percent of the electorate in November.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Board members, would you like to weigh in on your thoughts? Ms. Patrica?
I have thoughts on all three. First of all, I think polls are built-in term limits. I think that's why people go to the polls to vote. I think those are built-in term limits. I think the civics provision perpetuates misinformation, because there's this feeling out there that we don't teach civics in our schools. And with three children who have gone through elementary school in Lee County, not only do we teach it, but we teach it well. Just because a student might have a different political view from you doesn't mean that we're not teaching them civics. And finally, the creation of a separate system of approval and management of schools other than traditional public schools is troublesome to me. I think it's a further step away from local control of schools. And it's funny, because I've listened to the proponents of this talk about it, and one of the things they say is, "Our districts are too big. These are giant bureaucracies, and parents and families can't maneuver their way through these bureaucracies, and they feel lost. So we're going to move decision-making away from a district with 94,000 students and move it to the state that's responsible for 2.9 million students." You know, like, it just, it makes absolutely no sense. And I think that what was in the resolution is that it violates the constitutional requirement for a uniform system of quote, "free" public schools, it's really taxpayer-funded public schools, but it violates that provision. You can't have two separate systems of education in a system and call them equal or uniform. So I fully support the, not just the resolution, but I will also be voting no on Amendment Eight in November.
Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Juvanelli?
Okay, I am going to support the resolution. However, I still will remain firm on my conviction about, with term limits, and I hope that we can revisit that topic someday, but I'm going to support this.
Mr. Toiber?
I agree with Ms. Juvanelli. I don't have a problem with term limits, and I think the, I think that's the red herring with the CRC. I think they did a disservice by putting three separate educational issues into one topic, and they're putting, "Well, you want term limits." Well, that's not the issue. Then, one of the main issues are, we're putting in the state constitution the mandate for the legislature to require more requirements with no provision to fund it. So now they're just, we're actually giving the legislature more reasons to give us unfunded mandates to put requirements in, because, and they're just going to, and their cop-out's going to be, "Well, the Constitution requires it." Well, the Constitution also requires you to publicly, to adequately fund education, but you forgot that provision in Article Nine. So it really becomes frustrating that they would, that the CRC would do that. But the most important one is the one that Ms. Patrica talked about, which is really, really key. To be able to have the control taken away from the local school boards and taken away from local communities and allowing other, you know, entities to now start making educational systems, we start fracturing what was, what's been accomplished here in Lee, in the state of Florida. And I think it's really going to get to be, it's going to be something when you let, you know, open up Pandora's Box, and we're really going to get to the point where nobody's held accountable except for appointed people, not elected officials, that are accountable to the people at the local level. And I think this amendment, that provision alone, is going to totally ruin public education in Florida on every, you know, the existing system and any other system would be, will become ineffective because of that. So I'll be supporting the opposition against Amendment Eight. I'm just very disappointed that they would take three separate distinct issues, put them into one, and confuse people. So in my talk to all, to the public is, if one's bad, the amendment's bad. You can't let anything, if it's good, if they were, if they're foolish enough to put more than one thing in there, if one's bad, they're trying to just put something through on its tail, it's all bad. And so to me, I would oppose Amendment Eight, and I'll support this motion.
Any other comments? Ms. Fisher, any comments?
I support, I support this amendment.
Dr. Coughlin?
For all the reasons mentioned, I support it too. And I think beyond supporting it, we need to go on record to say that we disagree with it so often. If we don't make that statement, we get the response back, "Well, nobody, nobody questioned us, questioned us on it." It's very well-written, the rationale is well-described, and I feel it's important to make that statement from our district and from the consortium.
Ms. Morgan?
Piggybacking on Mr. Toiber, so effectively, the state's looking to spend local tax dollars on public education and decide how local tax dollars will be spent on public education. So, and essentially, this is all about the legislature not taking it on themselves. This stuff doesn't belong in the Constitution. These are all legislative actions. So I support the resolution opposing Amendment Eight.
And I too support the resolution for the same reason. These components really should be placed in statute rather than an amendment. I believe that we, that the legislature should have, did not do their due diligence in incorporating in statute so that each district, each community could vote on term limits that would best serve the needs of their community. To make a blanket statement throughout Florida really does a disservice for all of our communities. So I too am in support of this, so it sounds like, I believe...
Do we, do we need to vote on this tonight, or can we do it by consensus?
No, it's on the agenda for tonight, isn't it?
Yes, it's on the consent agenda this evening.
It's dated for tonight, so...
Okay, so we've had good...
Yes, so in supporting this with other members of the consortium, we are making a statement about local control.
Exactly right.
Because that, that is something that is consistently usurped with all of these actions by the state. Thank you.
And the community really needs to know it's about local control.
Exactly.
Because it's, that's very important, and especially for me.
I agree.
I agree. Right. Moving forward, let's go right and head into Executive Services, Campaigning on School District Grounds.
Yes, this was briefed, pre-briefed by Mr. Martin at the last briefing, and the, this is being brought forward for a change to Paragraph Two. The meaning of campaigning for a candidate for public office, as prohibited on school district grounds by Section One of this policy, includes the collection of signatures on a petition used to qualify as a candidate for public office. Also during the last pre-briefing, Ms. Fisher pointed out that there was redundant language regarding wearing buttons and other apparel, so it's been removed from One E, and it exists in what will now be Paragraph Four of the policy. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And new school and district websites.
Good afternoon.
We came in a little bit early here, so that we'd have all this ready for you, so we didn't waste too much of your time, but we wanted to, Laura Howard is here from my office, who is, if you need to know anything about websites, or apps, or tech, or anything, she is the person to come to. She's answered many questions for me and is a lifesaver for many folks in this district. So she's really done most of the heavy lifting on all of this stuff as we roll out new websites for the schools and the district before August 10th. So we just wanted to real quick give you a look at the template. It is currently not complete, but this is the working model right now of what the district site will look like come August 21st. That's our launch date for the new district site. And so we're very excited about it. We think that this is going to be a much nicer interface for people in the community and for our parents and our students. We've got our brand right on the top, some of the things just to show off right off the bat, which I think is going to make you all happy as well for some things that I've heard you asking for over the past couple of years that I've been here. We have easy dropdowns for selecting a school, also easy ways to translate the page. So right on the front page, you'll be able to translate it into some of the major languages that our students and our families speak. So that's a huge leap from what we had.
Wonderful.
The other thing too is the search bar right on the front page of the website, which I've been pushing for, because it's a little bit weird. We had to go to a menu to find the search bar, so you'll have the search bar right on the front page. And then we are still working on the menu dropdowns. What they've done in this company is awesome. They've taken everything from our current website and basically dumped it into here, but now it's our job to kind of organize it. So Laura and I are still working with a lot of the district departments on how we want this part to look, but it's going to be much easier. You know, you guys will still have your same kind of board pages off of the main thing, and you'll have this dropdown menu for you, and then we have information for the schools and student assignment and the superintendent, and then obviously careers, which is, I think, the second most visited page off of the main page of our website, is people who are looking for jobs with the district. So, so that'll be awesome to have that right there, too. And then we'll also have links easily found for students, for families, for our employees, and for our community. So we can put our advertising with the district and the community, we can put how we do business with the district and the community section, and then for families and students, we can put resources that maybe parents have at their disposal to help their kids with academics. So those will be some easy ways that they'll be able to find that information. And if you go a little bit further down, we also have some quick links. The other thing that I think I've heard specifically from Mrs. Fisher is the staff directory and how we had to have that go away over the last couple of years. This brings that back, so people will easily be able to search names and extensions and all of that kind of stuff, and positions and titles right off of the main site. And then these will probably change a little bit, but people will be able to get the lunch menus and the bus routes. We're going to have a direct link to safety and security right off the front page of the site. That's a difference that we don't have now, as well as financial transparency. And then hopefully, this will link directly to the new board doc system that you're all going to launch tonight, so it'll be one quick link for people to get the agendas and the minutes and the videos from your meetings. And then going a little bit further down, we have the upcoming events, the what's happening, and that's the news section. The big blue section on the side is going to be for advertising. So we are going to be able to have maybe, definitely three, if not four, spaces on the front page of our district site for companies to advertise with us. So that's exciting as we move forward there. And then some testimonial spots here where we'll be able to use, you know, parents and teachers and students, but also at the beginning, we may launch this with a little bit more about our brand, so that people kind of understand what we stand for. And then at the bottom, we have fast facts and our vision and our mission, and then we have some extra things down here in the footer with links to all of our social media accounts as well. Yes?
I just note, when the flat, fast, flat, fast facts flashed by, I appreciate this because it clearly is showing us as a school district not the data compared with incorporating charter schools as well.
Correct.
That's why it's very accurate, and I love seeing that 87 percent graduation rate.
Yes. I am not, I, we might have, yeah, I'm hoping that that's ours after this year, but that one might have to be modified a little bit, but yes, it will be in the eighties.
Everything can be updated.
Uh-uh, yes, so, for sure. So I, we just wanted to kind of give you a quick tour of what that looked like. And then the school websites, and this is a huge testament to the principals and the techs. I mean, we could not have done any of this without them at the schools. They really did an amazing job of keeping in communication with us and really doing a lot of the heavy lifting at the school level. But this is an example of what our elementary school sites now look like. Very clean, you know, big pictures. The picture that's in the front that you see with the kids in the globe, there can be up to five pictures that will rotate through there. And then a welcome to the school, and then again, those quick links and the news section, and then the footer. So that's the template for all of our elementary schools. These are live now, they went live last week. Here's a great one, Fort Myers Middle Academy. They have already their pictures and everything like that up there. So it's very similar where they have a welcome message, and then you've got some of the really big what's happening with the news, and then the upcoming events, which makes it a lot nicer, too, much easier for parents to find. And then the high school template looks this, a little bit different, but same kind of design, same kind of dropdown with the menus for students and parents, and then a lot of the pictures, and then some quick links to all of the different programs that they have on campus. And those are all customized based on the school. So that was it. We just wanted a chance to show it to you.
Thank you.
The front, the front page?
Of the district site?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is that picture right there going to change like it does now?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we have up to five different pictures that we'll be able to put there that'll rotate through, and not only that, but we'll be able to use them as banner advertisements. So if we have job openings, or there's an event that we want to do, or whatever, that would be prominent on the front page of the site.
You can click on it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then...
Information.
For Dr. Atkins, how close are we to paperless parent happiness at the beginning of the school year?
I'll check with Mr. Davis on that one.
I've got four this year. You want to meet with me after I've got that paperwork?
One, and just make four copy.
Not in different schools.
Question?
Yeah.
One of the frustrating parts for me was being able to always find a PeopleSoft link.
Yes.
When I would go to the website. So if I'm, so here I am, an employee, if I click on for employees, will that link pop up there?
I have a link there, and the impetus for all of this honestly is, is that we really need an Intranet site for all of our employees to go to that takes the place of multiple Intranet sites that we have. So what we did with this company, because they're very well-versed in Intranet sites, so what we'll be able to do now that we roll these out is spend the next eight months just designing a site for employees that'll be a single log-on. So you could use your credentials, go right to an employee's site, and you can get all of that information there. But ultimately, that for employees link will have, will have a link to that, but in the meantime, it'll have all of the links that employees need in order to navigate around where they need to be.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Anything else? Yeah.
Way more user-friendly. Thank you.
Good, thank you. We appreciate that. And anything you see or any, you know, as we keep moving forward, send us the ideas, because we like to hear from, you know, parents and folks in the district of ways that we can make it more user-friendly.
Pam had one today about a name clicking on in the picture to see, put a face with a name. Is that possible, or is that...
Yes. Yeah, if people want their picture taken.
The staff directory is more intuitive than the last one, where they will have, be able to put their name, any, like, information awards, or if they have their masters, any school they want to. So they'll have a full login that they'll be able to fill out their own data, every individual in the district.
Yeah. The other cool thing about this is the calendar function, which Laura's super excited about, because literally, schools can enter everything into one calendar, athletics and all that, and all they have to do is check off, share with the district, and it will all feed to one main calendar, and then we can then separate it out, so we can continue having our fine arts calendar. We can actually have a district-wide athletics calendar, which we've never really been able to have before, as well as board meeting counts. So we'll be able to make it a lot more user-friendly, so people can find what they want quickly, rather than having to sift through everything in order to get what they need.
That's good.
That's great. Thank you.
It'll be a lot, way more efficient.
This is wonderful.
Awesome. Thank you for your time.
And next, Lee County Athletics. Dr. Creel and Dr. Bohatch. And Friend.
Mr. Safley.
Mr....
Joel Safley.
Good.
Okay, good afternoon, and I'm here with Dr. Creel and Joel Safley. Joel's an original trainer to Lee County. Joel, how many years you been with Lee County?
Twelve years.
Twelve years, so we call him the OT, Original Trainer, or OT, The Old Trainer. In fact, Lee Memorial had it, and he was one of the first to come on board, and he's still here, so I guess he's happy.
Yeah.
Some athletic trivia, we have Dr. Creel here. When she first came on board, we just spent two hours with her on curriculum, and she knows her stuff, and she knows a little bit about athletics, but, maybe just a little bit, but she played college softball. And you were a pitcher, right?
I was.
And Mr. Dotig, you were a catcher, right, in college?
Well, I played outfield, first base, and caught, yes.
You're lucky that it's raining out, because we were going to take this outside to see if you could feel one of her pitches, so...
I don't think it's raining anymore. I think it's, I think it's sunny now.
One of those nerf softballs in here.
Okay, we're here to answer any questions about athletics moving forward for the upcoming season.
I just appreciate the thought that's been put into with providing the trainers assignments for the schools, so that we have somebody there to, we more readily have people moving forward, as I've looked at the PowerPoint previously. So I have a question.
We currently have seven. There's 14 high schools, so they share.
So we're thinking about moving to 10?
We're in negotiations now with Lee Health. In fact, about an hour ago, I got the contract via email that I'm going to forward to Mr. Dotig, because it'll be coming before you for approval, to have three.
Got three more.
Bring it to 10.
All right.
So six will have their own, and the others will be shared, so...
And I also like the heat acclimation policy piece that you've, that's been put into place and clarifying that.
I feel, I feel like we could do more as a district with athletics, if we had a more centralized focus on maximizing the experience for the children and the schools. And I, I don't feel like we've had that since I've been here. I'm under the impression, and it may be an absolutely incorrect impression, that we pay our coaches the absolute minimum, which makes it awfully difficult to get coaches who will come build a program and stay, because they're going to go to other parts of the state to, you know, go to programs that are already established. I just feel like we really can do more here, and I don't, I know budgets are tight, but when you look at what a student can get out of athletics, it can be life-changing, and it can be character-building, and it can keep them out of trouble, and...
And in school.
I'm speaking from personal experience, because it kept me out of trouble. So I don't know, I feel like we can do more. We don't really have an athletic, a district athletic director. I feel like we should be moving in that direction, and I feel like there should be a better relationship with the FHSAA. When I go up there once a quarter, once, I think I go up there five times a year, the large districts are represented there. The large districts all send their district athletic director, and they have input into policymaking at the state level. And I feel like we're missing an opportunity, so... Ask for data before I finish. Can I, can I get information on the number of students we have involved in fine arts? And I don't, I don't mean, I mean, fine arts extracurriculars versus the number of students we have involved in athletics, and perhaps a per-student breakdown on the amount of money we spend per student in each of those? If, if, can I ask for that information?
Yes.
I know I can ask for it.
Got it.
Could I, just give me the chance to respond to a little bit of that? I know that you had made some of your comments not too long ago relative to what you just said, and when those were shared. And I know that, you know, moving, moving forward, I think, you know, Dr. Creel has worked to reorganize the academic services department and has put a little bit more focus on athletics this year than what we may have seen last year. In addition to that, I know that I did share with them the desire to become more active at the state level. So I, you know, that's something that I know that they have, they have been discussing. And, you know, and moving forward, you know, with Mr. Rosas' position in working with human resources, one of the reasons why we wanted to do that was because we had noted that if you look at some of the data in terms of, relative to where we're having some of our difficulties that are coming to professional standards and places like that, there's definitely a need for training, and then if you think about, you think about student safety, and there's a need for a focus there. So I think with this upcoming school year, that you're going to see more of a focus than what you have seen in the past. In addition to that, when we had the principals' meeting, one of the things that we stressed to them, a couple of things, one is remember student, we didn't talk in the morning about student safety, but when I went out to them in the afternoon, student safety and the importance of making sure you're, you're adhering to the protocols, and the next thing is athletics, you know, and having conversations that you might think as an administrator would be common sense, you need to have them anyway. You know, I had an administrator years ago, and this is not athletics, but he would start out every year with, "Teachers, you need to never leave your classroom," you know, "with students in there." Might seem common sense, but, you know, there, we have all, probably many of our administrators have seen that teacher that just takes that quick chance to leave, and something potentially can happen. And, and so those reminders, and the same is true when it comes to coaches and appropriate behavior with students. behavior with students. So we talked about that with our principals, and I do know that I believe that with what Dr. Pruitt and Dr. Creel have been really working on together, that we're going to see a more integrated approach this year than we have last year. The final thing, I think, you know, we certainly share how you feel with, you know, every kid has a hook. It might be the arts, it might be athletics. In my case, it was athletics. So in somebody else's case, it may be the arts, but it's whatever can get a kid engaged in school, and, and so we think all of that is important. So I appreciate the comments, but I do want you to know that I did, we have talked about that when you raised it earlier, and I know that they've been working in that direction.
Yes.
Ms. Giavennelli had a comment, and so did Mr. Toibert.
Well, he actually answered it because I, I knew that Mr. LaRosa was in that role, so he answered what I was just going to bring up, you know, that I think they're working towards that. I mean, I, that was my impression anyways.
We had a meeting as late as this morning to coordinate services and training and how we implement our athletics and how we work with our coaches. So tomorrow night will be our first training for our coaches, and we're very excited about it.
Just a couple to what Chris was talking about, as far as the, our compensation for
our coaches. You know, we have coaches that have been here, you know, you get a beginning, a beginning coach that does it because they love the sport or whatever, but, you know, they don't really become, you know, that much of a, you know, of, of an expert until they do it a few times. And now we have some, you know, we, we just lost Mr. Sommers there for cross-country, but he was, you know, I don't know how long he had been a cross-country coach, but he was probably, you know, one of the best in the state. And, you know, we don't compensate for people that have that experience that they bring year after year and the, and the coaching expertise that they bring. And I think that's something the board should consider too, as far as a tiered level, as far as, you know, to be able to, to give us some credence to build. And, and not so much, and I, and I'm not even sure if, if it's just a lockstep we do or it's, or it's something flexible, but, but I think it's something that is worth considering.
Ms. Staker. I have two questions. Do we, do our athletic directors have flexibility in their hours so that if they're out of game last night until 11:00, they don't have to?
That varies from principal to principal.
Okay.
You know, some want them there when the first bell rings, and some will say, sleep in.
Okay.
The AD's the last one at night, 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, he's locking the gate.
Exactly.
They all do it a little differently.
Okay. And then, this is probably more for Lauren, who's not here anymore. Can we make sure that we have the FHSAA student eligibility paperwork on each school's website? And, and I will push them to get that online so that parents don't have to be mad filling it out.
You're talking about the EL2, EL3, all the different?
All that stuff. Yeah, I had a heck of a time trying to find it, and it should be easy. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be that hard. And if it's online, I have to print it. The schools don't have to print it, and that saves us some money. And then if we can get the FHSAA to allow us to fill it in electronically, then that saves everybody, so.
If you're on the board, you can make that happen.
That is what, that will be my goal.
Yeah.
I will, I will harass him the way I harass you.
Any other comments?
We'll lose the paperwork when we get home.
Could just chime in quickly. My other life before this job, I was on bargaining, and we did, and Dr. Pruitt's out there, we did in the last couple of years index the supplements for coaching. So I agree they're not plentiful, however, there is some consideration for years now.
Okay, good.
And.
When did that happen?
We're hoping, well, was it two, two bargaining sessions ago, Dr. Three? Okay, two? Okay. So a couple of bargaining agreements ago. So that has been done, and it's, the hope is to try to bring it up to what other districts, like Collier, are doing.
Which is what? What does Collier do? Exactly.
Well, their, their supplements are more.
Right. I mean, I think we do need to consider that, especially, we want to keep coaches in place. You know, there's a lot of struggle with that, and that's just even a lot, many different.
Paid based on experience.
Yeah.
Does that happen, I've questioned along with it, does that happen just for coaches or for any of their sup, all of their supplements?
Right.
Dr. Pruitt, do you want to come up and answer that question? She asked if, if it's across the board for all supplements. Have we done the indexing, or is it just for athletics?
Across the board.
Across the board, yeah.
Okay. I think that's critical too, because.
It is.
Absolutely. It's important to note. Thank you. I know it's not athletics, but it's critical. Anything else? Any questions? Yes.
Mr. Safley, a question. He had to borrow a tie and some shoes.
Mr. Safley, do we, are you, do you find that we're able to provide you with the materials and the information you need to do effective training?
Right. Very good.
I think we're a lot closer than we've ever been, but we have a ways to go. More trainers, if we can get to the ultimate goal of a trainer at every high school, we'll be at a level where we can compete, as well as with coaches. A trainer does not want to take care of two high schools. You don't get to know the personalities, you don't get to know the kids as well, and something can obviously happen when you're not there. If we can get to where there's one at every high school, an athletic trainer would be very happy doing the job that they do in that situation.
And we'd be better off liability-wise.
Exactly. So then I have a question. So, like, are, do you do another job or just totally athletic trainer? And like, then what is your hours and how much time are you spending?
We were, I'm going to, the set, there's seven right now, but three are actually employed by Lee Health.
Okay.
We have a supervising physician that oversees all of us. We have to go out and find one. We had Dr. Abbott Kagan for a long time. He retired, and then one of his other docs took over, Dr. Laporta. Dr. Kagan made, got the agreement started with the hospital where they actually employed the first three that came to join us, so now there's seven of us. We work in the, we have offices here. We work in the morning. We do a lot of paperwork, injury reports, talking with parents, coaches, athletic directors. We go out to the schools, try to get to your first school before school gets out. Some people will stay. We try doing it different ways. One trainer may stay at that one school all day that day and then go to the other school all day the next day. Whereas if geographically you have a little bit closer schools, you'll go to the, your school the first half and then the second school the second half of the day. So, and we try to see what works better. Some things work better with some schools and, and coaches, and some, and the other way works better for them. So, and then we're at events every evening that those go on. So again, with two schools, you usually have an event. If one school has a night off, it's luckily or unluckily, the other school usually has an event for you to attend, so. So we're, late mornings, we're here.
Thank you.
After, all afternoons, we're at the practices, and then evenings, we're at events.
So do you travel, like, away football games? Do you travel to the, with the, with the team, or how does that work?
We've began to. Before this, no, we always stayed at home because there were just enough of us to be able to fulfill having a trainer at all of the home events. We always travel with football postseason, if they go into postseason activity. But the only time right now we travel with a football team is if there's few enough home games that Friday night that, that a person can go with one of the teams on the road. Because we want to take care of Lee County first.
Right.
Even though it may be a Lee County team going on the road, we need to have someone at every site here if it's necessary.
Ms. Shergill, I have something.
Thank you. So Mr. Safley, how important would it be to student safety to have a trainer at each school?
It's immensely important.
Okay.
The, the things that an athletic trainer can do sometimes, or a lot of times, there's even things that I think we can do that people aren't aware of yet because our services haven't been displayed to that level yet. Preventive programs are probably the biggest thing.
Yes.
No, we, we, we haven't got to the point where we're trying to work on prevention quite yet. I mean, we're, we rolled out cold tub protocols and procedures and all that, and that's great, but with an athletic trainer at every school?
Right.
There's a very small percentage of the time you're ever going to need a cold tub because you're going to prevent that from ever happening.
Exactly.
You're going to prevent that through hydration programs and, and weighing kids in and out to know how much intake they need to get back. There's a lot of preventive programs an athletic trainer would ensure at the school that would help take things away where we need to be worried about what we need to do in the emergency.
Thank you for that information. As a prevention person, I plan to support this and push it. Thank you.
I agree. And I, out of curiosity, so when I look at the 10, you made your suggestion of how you're pairing different schools. And I get it that they, these are close to each, closer in location, but were you also looking at the size of their athletic programs as part of that number? That's what I thought. That's what I was considering. Okay. I hope we're able to move to 10, at least.
And more.
I may have missed this information earlier, so I apologize if it's a repeat, but do you report to the AD, the principal, or the coaches?
Do I?
Yes.
Yes, to all of them. See, when I go out to our high schools, everyone, the athletic trainers, the first person they report to is probably the athletic director, and the coaches.
Well, the reason I ask is from a liability point of view. So let's say the trainer says the student needs, the student, something's wrong, and the coach disagrees. The coach wants that child back on the field.
FHSAA, I have, I can mandate, I have control over that to override that coach to not allow that person out, back out there as a medical professional.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're moving right along to the assessment calendar.
And here comes Richard. I love him.
That was your thing.
It's his stuff.
Good afternoon.
Your backup documents, you have what's called the 2018-19 Uniform Statewide Assessment Calendar. And as you probably recall, each year, we have to bring this to you for approval, and we need to publish that for our community, especially for our parents. And the requirement is just to do that by October 1st. We would like to do it as close to the beginning of school as possible.
Thank you.
And so after this briefing, we plan to bring that to you for action on August 14th, I believe it is.
Can you talk about the percentage?
Okay.
So the, the, I'll highlight a few things in the document, and then if you have questions, feel free to ask. Most of it is filled out by the state, but there are some things that, that we add as well. Table three has the required state test assessments, and there are a few things that you may notice. One is that most of the testing is now concentrated for FSA in May, and that was something that, as you recall, was legislated. So the vast majority is going to be done in the last four weeks of school. The exceptions to that are grade three reading and writing are going to be done the first week of April. Otherwise, all the rest is, is in May. The other thing is that there has been a change for elementary school testing in sixth grade, which will now all be back on paper. As you recall, the state had this elaborate timeline of, of going to all computer-based testing, but that's been rolled back, so grades three through six are all on paper beginning this school year.
That's good.
And then, the last thing there in that table is that you'll see that in the district column that we've chosen specific dates, even though we're given a window. And we do that for two reasons. One is for pace, paper-based testing, they require us to choose a day or days for the testing, and then makeups can continue after that during the window. And we also have made an effort this year to specify some shorter windows for the rest of the testing to make it more consistent across the district.
Thank you.
I think that will be helpful, and that was one of Dr. Creel's ideas when she learned this past year that, you know, that some of the schools have a month-long window, and they do it anytime during the month, which is what most districts do. She was a little perplexed by that, so it, with the scrunching of the, of the testing schedule by the state mandate in May, it's reduced, and then we've reduced a little bit further, again with the understanding that makeups can be done anytime during the window. Just a couple of other things. In table five, we have our district required quarterly progress monitoring. And then in the last table.
Oh, my God.
You see the estimated testing times. And so the state puts in the number of minutes of testing times of the statewide assessments. We've put in our minutes, and then we added a column that is the percent of instructional time. This was not in the original document, but we thought it was important. And the, the stipulation is that it cannot exceed 5% of instructional time. And as you can see, we do not exceed 2.5% in any particular grade level.
You got it.
Any questions for us about the assessment calendar?
Just a comment. This is a lot smaller than it had been in previous years, and table five is, I really like it, and it's right to the point. And thank you for that table on the amount of instructional time, because I think it's important for us to be able to refer people to that.
Yes.
And so we really appreciate all the work, and I think we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
And even though we are adding the non-graded formative assessments that we spoke about earlier, we, those are included in this, and we wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that even with those added assessments, that we are still way below the percentage of the testing amount that is allowed.
The kids will be happy, too.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you.
Awesome.
Next, under operations, we have safety updates with Mr. Demming and Mr. Parfit.
Okay, we're, we're glad to be here today to give you a quick update on safety and security. Rick and I just got back from the National Safety and Security Convention. We learned a lot of things. He's going to go over a lot of them, but what I wanted to let you know is almost everything that they're suggesting is what we are in the process of doing. The things they're not suggesting are things we're in the process of not doing. So we were real pleased with a lot of the things we heard. The other thing, just a quick side note for me, then I'll let Mr. Parfit speak because he's the expert. I'm really glad to hear you all talking so much about athletics because we need to do a whole lot with our athletic programs here in Lee County. With that being said, let's get back to the really important stuff, safety and security, and Mr. Parfit will give you the update.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Just an update of where we're at on, on safety and security. The, the first issue, and it's, these are, some of these are time-sensitive, so we have the Florida Safe School Assessments that are required by August 1st of each year for each individual school. So those are just about completed. They'll be completed. There's a couple remaining that will be completed tonight. The, you know, with the reorganization of the safety and security, we've hired three new zone security managers, and they actually started yesterday, and we have them in training yesterday and today. The, part of what my role here is, is especially with, with the new legislation, is that we must provide training for mental health awareness, and the district's moving forward with that under a program called Prepare. And we have identified, and we've actually started the first phase of that training, and it's actually being coordinated by Amy Clark and Lori Brooks. And this mental health awareness training, as a reminder, is that every staff member will be trained in things to look for, not just mental, mental health, but some, also some developmental disorders, things like that that relate to awareness from a safety standpoint. The threat assessment teams are going to be in place this fall, and we've started the, the training process. Matter of fact, the, yesterday and today, we have a Train the Trainer program, and it was, it's being held at the Police Academy here. We have 24 individuals from the district. Well, actually, six of those are law enforcement trainers, and the, the remaining folks are from the school district. And these folks will be Train the Trainers for our threat assessment teams, which will train approximately 500 people this coming year. The teams at each school are, would be composed of a principal or an assistant principal, ideally a social worker, psychologist, or school counselor. And we. worker, psychologist, or school counselor. And we typically would look at keeping the numbers small in these teams, and doubling up possibly on the mental health. Also, the school resource officer, our zone security managers, which we have just hired. And then, on an ad hoc basis, we would invite possibly a school nurse, school teacher, security specialist. These folks would all, all obviously provide insight into a threat assessment should, should that happen. The proposal that I made is that we have, the, the legislation doesn't provide for it, but the proposal is, proposal is that we establish what we would call a district threat assessment team. And this would be comprised of district-level employees. And this would, this would provide an oversight role of the actual schools' threat assessment teams. And, and also, could also provide a threat assessment in the event that we were dealing with an employee issue, and not allow that, and not necessarily have to deal with that on a school-based threat assessment team. This would be comprised of the Director of Safety/Security, Director of Psychological Counseling Services, H.R. representatives, and including professional standards, also law enforcement, student academic services folks as well, probably, especially the E.S.E. and, and areas like that. We, as far as school resource officers, we have information, we have confirmation from all the agencies. We are, we will have SROs in all of the schools, and the Sheriff's Office indicated to me that they will be providing SROs for a number of the, the charter schools. So, all of our charter schools should be covered also with school resource officers this coming year. From the target-hardening part of safety and security, working with the technology folks here, we're, they're already in the process of installing the video entrances that we spoke of, the, the kind of a system that would allow the doors to remain locked, a visitor to be buzzed in, and somebody at the front desk would, would be able to see who that individual is, communicate with them before they would allow that. They've already started that in a number of schools, and will work throughout the school year on the remaining schools. The hurricane preparation, we're still working with emergency, county emergency management, the EOC folks. They've, they have visited our shelter schools, discussed concerns with the, the principals and school administrators there, especially related to pet-friendly shelters, damages, things like that at, at those schools. Also, working with the EOC on installing antennas for amateur radios or ham radios at those schools also. The EOC will provide ham radio operators to volunteer at those shelters as well. And that's all I have, folks.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Ms. Patrica?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I think parents are going to feel very safe sending their kids to school a week from Friday because of the work that you've done. I've sat in on both the big group hurricane preparedness training and the individual school preparedness training, and I have significantly more faith and confidence in our staff than I do in the EOC staff. So, thank you for that as well. I appreciate your efforts in that regard as well.
Ms. Chivinelli?
So, okay, my question is, will we be, will we meet the, the deadline for the, being compliant with the law, by whatever the deadline was? What was the deadline? I don't remember.
August 1st for the threat assess-
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
The safe, the safe schools assessments, yes.
Oh, awesome. Good.
They'll be finished.
Thank you.
And we're one of the only schools in the state that will be. Districts. When we were at the conference this week, there was representatives from every state in the United States, except Hawaii, and almost all the districts in the state of Florida were there. And we were well ahead of the majority of them. And that made us feel good, and made me feel good about everything Rick's been doing to, to get our schools up where they're supposed to be.
Thank you. Kudos to our team for that. That's great. Ms. Chivinelli, and then back to Ms. Patrica.
And one other thing, too. So, the hurricane plan is in place and everything. We're ready to, we're ready for that, if that happens again, because we're-
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Ms. Patrica?
So, you said that, that we're doing most of the things, that best practices you found at this meeting, and then you're not doing the other things. I know one of the things that you're not doing, because it's not considered a best practice, is the metal detectors. Can you give us a list of yay, we're doing these things as we should be, and also the things we're not doing, because they're bad? Please.
Certainly. The, the single point of entry, obviously, is a big topic nationally, and that's, that's driving a lot of the conversation on school safety. The, the video entrances is another, is another area. Obviously, additional CCTV access control. But likewise, a lot of what these folks said, and ironically, you mentioned the, the metal detectors, the, I think he was the executive director of the, the program on the safe schools, talked about how ineffective metal detectors were. And there were probably at least four companies at this conference that he said he probably would not have returned because of that. It's just, it's not an effective way. But a lot of the conference and a lot of the information that is being driven is the, again, the, the prevention-based piece of safety and security. You know, we're probably the 80%, 20%, the, that we need to look at the 80% prevention, 20% response technology.
And they also emphasized not to forget the human factor, that the student supervision protocol is very important, and we need to make sure that we enforce that. And we have a, a long-written procedure that every school is going through, and they understand what the, the student supervision protocol is.
And that, you know, that's, of course, at the principal meeting, that was one of the things that we stressed, or I stressed, in, during my part, is making sure that, that they reminded teachers, making sure they had those protocols in place. We talk about active supervision, all of those types of things. It should be one of the first things out of the gate when you, when you meet back with your faculty at the start of school, the importance of, of school, school safety, and being where you're supposed to be when you are assigned. And then, as a principal, making sure that you have a system in place to ensure compliance with your expectations. The old days where the principal goes to one singular spot, and that's where they are, they are, every single class exchange, every single period, have to be over. They, they should never know where you're going to pop up. So, you have to have a system to monitor that. That was something that we stressed. And then, what we turned right around and stressed to, to Mr. Demming and, and Mr. Parfitt, which they're working on, is that as a district, they have a mechanism for checking compliance at the school level. So, that we're rotating around, you don't know where we're going to be, and we're checking your class changes, and, and cafeteria, and your entry and exits.
Ms. Fisher?
So, so what comes to my mind is, as we're giving out a message to a large group, and you and I have talked about this before, how are we checking for understanding so that we know they know what to do to be compliant? You know what I'm saying? So, I don't know if there's a mechanism or a strategy for that, or a way of getting feedback from them so that you know, okay, I heard what you said, and this is what it is. Yeah.
We can certainly discuss that question.
Sure. And that's a lot, the zone managers are going to be checking on that kind of thing daily. And they're going to be out in their zones. We're going to be checking on that daily. But overall consensus was the human factor is the biggest factor in all this. Technology, gadgets, all these kind of things, they help. But the human factor is the most important thing. And we got to make sure our, our human factor understands what they're supposed to do, and when they're supposed to do it. And that's what we're working on.
Amen.
Ms. Patrica?
So, you mentioned prevention, Mr. Demming. And I think that the focus on the softening of schools that you talk about so much is so important, not just for preventing this here, but preventing this in society in general.
Exactly.
So, I was listening to Representative Rodriguez give some comments about the Guardian Program versus the SRO Program. And I know that's well-settled, and we've made the right decision. But his comments were interesting to me, because it didn't feel as if he understood the importance of prevention. You know, he said that they fully funded, the state fully funded the Guardian Program, because he wanted school districts to choose that, because that would allow us to exempt schools from gun, from being in gun-free zones. So, essentially, he wanted us to change the law by choosing Guardian Programs, and that, to me, didn't make sense, because that's not our job.
Exactly.
If he wants to exempt schools from being in gun-free zones, then he should change that law. The other thing he said was, you know, in looking at active shootings, not active shootings, mass shootings across the country, they always occur in gun-free zones. Now, I don't know whether that's true, but he said that what, by, by taking schools out of that gun-free zone category, then the crazy person will go on their rampage someplace else. And I was thinking, why would we want to rampage anywhere? You know? And that's what I think the SROs bring to the table. The SROs allow us to identify mental health issues and get them help. And that's what we'll be approving tonight, which, again, is ironic when you look at our efficiency report earlier today. We're so efficient, because we have so few psychologists and so few counselors.
Exactly.
And that's where our need is.
Yes.
And thankfully, we'll be increasing that. So, the prevention piece, thank you, Mary, for hammering that into my head, that the prevention piece is very important, and I see the focus there. So, thank you.
And the Guardian Program, they are just guards. They're sentries.
Right.
Exactly.
They are not people that can speak with kids. They're not. They can't arrest.
Right.
They can't call for backup.
Right.
All those different things that our SROs can become involved with. And, you know, every one of y'all have been in schools. If you go in schools and you see what those deputies do, it's amazing how they are bridging the gap to people not liking the police, because they, they build relationships.
Yep.
Societally, it's very important also.
The, the other piece that I think is, is important, because I sometimes hear pushback from teachers, like, well, the SROs aren't doing this, or the SROs aren't doing that. I had a conversation with my nephew, who's an SRO in, in Rhode Island, and he explained to me why he doesn't do certain things. And I think, Rick, you can probably have that conversation, or have your zone managers explain to teachers why they do and don't do certain things. So, for example, he said, you know, teachers and principals will yell at me for not, not, not telling a kid to get back to class. But if I tell a kid to go back to class, and he says no, or gives me the finger, responds whatever way a kid's going to respond, he said, I have no authority to do anything about that. So, it, it erodes his credibility as a law enforcement officer in that building, if he's tasked with doing things that he doesn't have the ability to.
Disputing.
Exactly. So, so anyways, I think that a better understanding of the SRO's role in the schools might help teachers and administrators to work, not that they're not working well now, but I do think there's some misunderstanding out there.
Yes.
Okay. Then we're going to move right along, because we need to go to major capital update. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, board members. It's with great pleasure. Today, I deliver a update to our major capital projects. As you can see from this slide, we have three major projects right now underway. I'll begin with Benita Springs High School, which I'm very excited to say that we're almost wrapping that project up. We're on schedule. I'll give you a little background. There's four major buildings there. Building A and B have been delivered to the principal. We have activity in those buildings, a lot of activity, mostly the delivery of furniture, equipment, supplies, and instructional materials. So, I know the, the principal and the staff are very busy. As a matter of fact, just to give some kudos to some operations folks, we do have a group coming down from operations tonight to help out the school. We're also planning to go down in the weekend and volunteer to help them with the setup of things and the delivery of items. So, a lot of activity there. As far as budget's concerned, you know, we did have to come back for an increase in the total project cost, as we made promises to you all that we'd work our best effort to keep the budget under what we came for, through value engineering and through a lot of our direct material purchases. We're glad to say that we have remained under our revised budget. And we'll be really excited to share with you once we close the books on that project, how much we did, we're able to save. Target opening, obviously, we've already reached that for two buildings. Building C, which is the black box theater in the arts area, was originally promised in contract to be delivered in October. I'm happy to say that we're far along on that, and confident that Gulf Point will be able to deliver that, probably around when students arrive at that school on August 10th. The fields are all in. We're letting the sod grab some roots there, so we're not allowing the students to practice, but they're over at Estero High School, so their football season, or preseason is underway. And then, the fieldhouse, Building D, is basically awaiting some partitions for the restrooms. So, really happy to say that the progress construction-wise is moving along. And one other event, exciting event, will be next Wednesday, August 8th, at 4:00 p.m. We'll have the official ribbon-cutting ceremony. So, looking forward to that. And I also wanted to share that we know that there's a larger community that is really excited about this project. And Mr. Estes is planning, and later in the fall, in October, an open house for the public to come in and tour the facility, and see the great project that we're able to complete there. So, Benita Springs High School, I'll see you all there next Wednesday. High School MMM, the next two projects are in pre-construction. So, both, you see a lot of green up here, they're on schedule. The budget that we're working with is a pre-construction budget. And I'm, the next slide I go to, I just want to revisit the process and approach we're taking with construction. So, we were approved a pre-construction budget, and we are within that budget right now. We're working with both of these projects, the project architect, engineers, and the construction managers, on developing the design documents. So, those are all moving forward. The target opening for MMM, obviously, is in August 2021. We will stage the freshmen in 2020 at Lee High Senior High School. The Lee High Senior High School Edition will be opening August 2019, so about a year from now. So, when you look at the construction schedules and project schedules for both those projects, we are on schedule, I'm happy to say. Now, this is the process that I wanted to revisit, and you guys probably do remember us presenting it back in November 2017. It was part of our capital briefing. And what we explained there, or rolled out to you, was a new approach to construction, to make us more efficient, and more accurate, more transparent. And I'm happy to say, we've actually implemented this process with both High School MMM and the Lee High Senior High School Edition project. So, this is what you're looking at now, is a flow, process flow for pre-construction, and there's swim lanes. And these are key, key players in pre-construction, planning, operational facility staff, the architect and construction manager, the latter two being part of the design team that we've contracted with. So, this process really, and I wanted to highlight three important key milestones here. Right now, we're in schematic design. And basically, that's working with the stakeholder, which right now is academic services, the principal at Lee High Senior High School, establishing what type of activity is going to happen in the building, and designing spaces that meet that need. To further that, tonight, Scott Rickenbacher and I will be attending a Hampton Park Homeowners Association to present where we are with MMM to the community, as well as take in input and get some feedback, and also to mitigate some of their concerns. So, lesson learned from Benita Springs High School, get out in front, as far as community engagement is concerned, and happy to say that we're moving along with that. So, we're here at schematic design, which means we're finally getting some design documents together that we could make some estimates on. And if you follow my mouse here, if it shows up, right here is the first blush we're going to have for an estimate on this, on both of these projects. So, at this particular point, we'll have the construction manager, the engineer, and the architect working to develop the construction costs for this project. It's about 30% design document completion. So, obviously, there's a lot more design that has to be done. But it gives us an idea of where we are. And if you follow this chart right here, you'll see a step with the architect, and everybody's engaged in this, project value engineering. So, again, we haven't put shovel and ground. We haven't contracted with even the construction manager for the full-blown contract, just pre-construction. This will give us an ability to value engineer, if the estimate is not in the ballpark that we're thinking of. We'll do some project value engineering. We'll continue to the design development, and get to between 70 and 80% design document at this point right here, where we have design development documents. That'll give us a really good blush at what the estimate for this project will be. And then, finally, on this last, if you see what my cursor is, we should have 100% design development done. That means the architect and the construction manager has- That means the architect and the construction manager has worked together to develop documents that they are highly confident is accurate as to what would be built on that site. And at that point, we're gonna hand those documents to the subcontractors and let them bid. And what that will do is allow us to give you, the board, a very accurate estimate for what this project is gonna cost us in the district. And then that we will bring forward. So right now, we're talking, or the, or the timeline is looking at, for the Lee High Senior High School addition, in the middle of December, we'll be bringing the board a total project costs for approval. High School MMM will come on the heels of that in January. So those are some things for you to look forward to. One of the things that we also want to start doing, or we have already started to do, is a best practice, and that's monitoring the market. Because we learned in the last project that the market changes. It's very volatile, particularly when you hear about tariffs on steel and other materials. Very important for us and our partners to monitor that market. And to that end, this packet I have in my hand right here are regular updates from not only construction managers, but also vendors and material suppliers. So we're getting regular input from the market on what inflation is looking like, as well as what the labor market looks like. So to that end, I want to share with you some of the information that I've gleaned from the, this information I shared. Labor rates, and these are all since January of 2018. There is a 10% increase in labor rates here in Lee County, and that's largely due to the lack of workers that we have. With a good economy, it's hard to find people to go into construction. It's a tough job, particularly in the summer. Cost of construction materials, again, since January 2018. Structural steel, up 30%. And that was, and that number was provided to me before we heard talk of tariffs. Aluminum, between 20 and 30% increase. Concrete, 6 to 8%. Drywall, up to 25%. Metal framing, up 25%. Just highlighting some of the material costs and inflation that we're getting from the market just since January. Now, when you talk about a total project, what are the projects looking like? Well, if you look at a project that was estimated in December, and if you were gonna go out and build it today, between a 12 and 15% overall increase in the cost of a project. I'm not telling you that to scare you, I just want to make sure that you are continuously updated on what the field looks like. Again, I'll go back to our workforce. We have very low unemployment here in Lee County, and it's a struggle to get subcontractors and workers to do construction. So that is gonna be a growing challenge for our area. We have a lot of competition when we build things. The school district is not the only folks in the construction business. A lot of retail is building, a lot of commercials being built. So we have to be mindful of what else is out there as far as competition in construction. And the last thing I want to bring to your attention, because it has a factor not just on the cost, but also the schedule, is regulatory requirements. And I'm talking in particular permitting, Army Corps of Engineer. Luckily, we compensated for that in our timeline for MMM, because we knew it could be up to 24 months. And that's becoming a reality. We had a couple of natural disasters last year, not just Irma, but Maria in Puerto Rico has affected us. We have a local representative on Army Corps that's reviewing our application. That person was reassigned to Puerto Rico for 60 days and did not open our application during that duration, has just now returned to the region, and we are number 13 on the list to be reviewed. I don't know exactly what 13 means, but right now, I'm not pushing the panic button. But we, we will if we find that that's gonna elongate our schedule and jeopardize our opening date. Again, I'm sharing this only with you to let you know that we are monitoring all these things that could affect schedule and price of these two projects. But we're confident at this point that both of them will be delivered on our projected dates and, to our best of ability, will achieve some economy and some efficiency in the construction in the process. So with that said, I'll open it up for any questions you might have.
Impressive. I have a lot of questions today. So I guess I misunderstood our new process. I thought we hired a design engineer and he gave us a design that we could use up to five times, and then we went out and hired the construction manager. But this shows me that the construction manager is involved much earlier in the process.
That's, that's definitely true.
So cost cannot ever be used as a factor, according to the statute that we have to follow for construction. Cost cannot be used as a factor in determining who the construction manager is, so that's why he's involved so much earlier in the process.
That's correct. You get real value in value engineering, bringing on a construction manager. Architects are great. But we've learned that, and I've learned, that having a construction manager who knows the ins and outs of how you may be able to build something economically is very important. So yes, having them early on in the design, pointing out things where we could save money or do things differently or use a different material to achieve the same outcome is very important. Now, you get it, you made a great point with MMM, because basically, we're using the prototype at Benita Springs. However, we are adding a third floor. And we have altered the proposed site plan because the site is different. And we've learned some things in regards to bus ramps, covered walkways, and doing things a little bit more economically. So that's gonna require some re-engineering. We have different scenario here for water management as well that requires engineering. So not all projects are gonna be identically the same. But yes, we have saved some time because we do have so much value engineering at Benita Springs High School, and we can implement a lot of the things that we did there on this project. So we are saving in that case. Matter of fact, the architect's contract with this project is, is much, and I can't give you a quote or a price, but I can give it to you later, it's, it's a lot more affordable for this design than what we paid for Benita Springs High School. Now, Lee High Senior High School's custom, because we have never done an addition similar to this.
All right. So then at the end of the process, we will still be given, or enter into a guaranteed maximum price contract so that if they start construction and, let's say, all of the costs that you just suggested, there's a 25% increase in those during the life of the construction, that's not on us, that's on the construction manager at that point, right?
Yeah, that's the beauty of a construction manager at-risk contract. The risk is on the construction manager. And that GMP is just that, it's a guaranteed maximum price. So we're locked in and they have to deliver the school, unless there's some type of circumstance that's beyond their control, they're locked in for that price. So that's why it's important to have them involved early on. It's also why it's important to look at inflation and build that into the project cost.
Okay. Thank you.
And that will also come into play with the bids that we get from our subcontractors. Once we accept a bid, then they're locked in. And so that, therefore, we will be seeing a significant, we won't see those changes like we did previously.
Exactly right. And to further that point, having a full set of construction documents when you go out to bid is advantageous. That did not happen with Benita Springs High School. We were designing buildings as we were bidding and constructing. So you look at Building C was being designed when Building A was under construction. So our approach is gonna guarantee us the maximum amount of economy that we can achieve.
We've never done construction this way before in this district.
That, that's correct. We have never took this approach to construction.
And I believe that moving forward, it's going to be significant cost savings. And when I look at our past history from 12 years and prior ago and prior to that, there were extreme expenditures that came into play that had not been thought out well. And so I just am glad we have a much better process in place, and I believe that this is going to be, prove to be a wiser use of our taxpayer dollars.
I agree, and I'm really excited about the process and these two projects. So eager to get them going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There was the one change order report. Unless there are any questions regarding that, we will move on to public comment. Mr. Dodig?
Sure. School Board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting for members of the public to address the board concerning any matter on this briefing meeting's agenda. The subject of comment is limited to those items on the agenda. The time permitted is three minutes per speaker. I have no cards.
Okay. Those of you in the audience, do we have anyone who would like to make a comment? All right, then moving on, we will move to board member comments. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I'm gonna be brief. I'm gonna send my reports by email like Mrs. Morgan did in the interest of time. But I just wanted to say at this point, thank you again to Keith Martin and welcome to Rob Dodig to the table for all the work that's been done by our staff in preparation for the 18-19 school year. I am very excited and thanks staff for that. And I see that Marshall Bauer from our Foundation for Lee County Public Schools is in the audience, and we look forward to another year of partnership where you enhance and enrich our educational process. And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Ms. Juvenelli?
I really don't have any. I echo that, and I'll see you Friday.
Ms. Patrica?
The only comment I have is, I didn't realize we were talking about the, I can't remember the name of the thing, resolution. I didn't think we were talking about that this afternoon. I thought we were talking about it tonight. That and advisory board appointments, advisory committee appointments. I had, I have comments on those, but I wasn't gonna pull them from the consent agenda because it wasn't efficient. The comments that I have to make don't, don't justify requiring the superintendent to read those, those recommendations out loud. I think it will slow the meeting down. So what I was going to do is just make my comments at the end of the meeting. Is that okay with you guys? I just want to make sure that I'm not violating protocol or that, I'm just trying to be efficient. And I'll make my comments now about the, so that I don't have to waste our time tonight. The advisory committee, one of, the man that we're approving tonight was the chief financial officer for NPR, NCR, National Cash Register, remember that company from way back? NCR, yes. And he has retired here. He's also the founder of the Finance Advisory Committee for a school district in Minnesota. So he moved into this district in Minnesota. There was a referendum for property tax to build schools in his community, and it failed. And so he went to the superintendent and said, how can I help you get this to pass? So he founded the Finance Advisory Committee up there and helped them tighten up their finances so that they could successfully pass it the next year. Anyways, I'm so excited that he's joining the Finance Advisory Committee because he's exactly the kind of person we need on that committee. And he came, like, I just happened to cross paths with him at a different education function, and he volunteered his time and his talent to us. And I just want to urge us to, to be looking for those kind of people, whether it's construction or CSI or curriculum or whatever. This guy, this guy's gonna make us better, and that's what it's all about. So those are my comments for tonight.
Mr. Twyper?
And to piggyback on to what Ms. Patrica said, for those of you who are watching today, please, please look on the website. We are still soliciting people to apply for our advisory committee positions. And we are really trying to look at bringing onboard, onboard those committees, people who will be able to move us forward, to challenge us, to look at us thoroughly. And so I encourage you, if you have any desire, please, please, complete those applications and we would love to incorporate you into our advisory committee meetings. And Ms. Dr. Buckle?
Just to wish everybody a spectacular opening school day. We're all excited.
Ms. Morgan?
Let's see. First of all, just a reminder that Dr. McCullers needs your input on the evaluation, because we really want to get that done so that Dr. Atkins has it in place. You're going to bring up plus delta?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And then, and I'm gonna do that during Good of the Order. Mr. Dodig, any comments?
I don't, other than to say thank you, Ms. Fisher. And I am so pleased to be here and look forward to many years working with the school board, so thank you for the opportunity.
Dr. Atkins?
No comments.
Okay. And for Good of the Order, I just want to share with you, most of you were with us on New Teacher Orientation and are, they were receiving these phenomenal teachers, no, T-shirts that incorporated the Acrostic Teach. And we each have one. And so the idea came about amongst us that it would be a wonderful way to inspire our teachers and our parents, our students for the upcoming year if we were to come to the evening board meeting wearing those T-shirts to show we are in fully support of our teachers and thrilled to have them come and be part of our district. So I'm just proposing that as Good of the Order, and thoughts?
Mine is at home on my island, right next to where my briefcase is, so that I wouldn't forget it.
And Ms. Fisher's is at home.
Mine's at home also.
Are we a favorite who may be doing it at the next meeting on the, on the 14th?
Yes. For T-shirts, all the time.
See, I was gonna say, we do have access to shirts.
You can do that too. So mine's here. I was gonna wear mine Friday.
Another layer, another layer of clothes in this room today, that's a good idea.
Dr. Pruitt can get T-shirts for, for everyone? Want to go ahead and do it tonight then?
Whatever.
Let's do it tonight, because it is literally freezing in here, so whatever we can do. And Mr. Twyper, you'll just need to remove your jacket. Yes, Ms. Fisher?
You gonna say something about plus and delta?
Yes. No, I was going to discuss the plus delta. I, I said that I would like to discuss that at the, at tonight's, at the end of tonight's action meeting in my board member comments. But that is my thought, but if the board would rather my, have, have that conversation during the briefing meeting, I'm able to do that conversation now as well.
I think it's more appropriate to do it now.
All right. So moving forward, that's the other aspect that has to do with Good of the Order. It has been an interesting process that we've gone through regarding plus deltas. It first started in 2015. I remember coming onboard and being so frustrated, we never had time for conversation. We tried to do the plus deltas off to the side, standing in a very close quarters. It did not work very well. Then we decided we would move to a piece of paper and we would make our comments that way, which then did not allow for conversation. So there was frustration with that. So after discussion with that, this past year, we decided to have the conversation and it moved within to the kitchen area. I personally, I don't believe anyone was thinking about anything being secret. We, and we had Mr. Martin there to help hold us in the sunshine. However, public perception is very important and very critical. And while, and so I do believe that we need to move forward with our plus deltas, and I would recommend that we possibly consider Room D as a place where we could move following the meetings, have conversation there, follow the same process and procedure, and then those members of the public that would like to see what takes place and listen in, they're free to sit on the side and, and get a feel for what we do. So those are my thoughts. Any comments or suggestions from others? Ms. Fisher?
I would be amenable to doing that. I think that public perception is critical. And so I think doing it in a place that allows for people to come and observe is probably the best thing we could do at this point.
Any other comments? Ms. Juvenelli?
I would support that. You know, y'all know how I felt about it from the very beginning, so I would completely support going, that's D is just right out the corner.
D is right there.
Yep, wonderful.
That's an, that's an easy transition. We could open the door to the kitchen, but the only problem with that is we start hearing beep, 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 and that would not work at all. So, all right, then if that's be the case, so then, Mr. Twyper, thoughts? Would you be amenable to that?
Sure.
Ms. Dr. Cocke, Ms. Morgan? I, I don't know that there's a, unless someone has another thought or an idea to share, I don't know how else to move forward.
If I could just, for tonight, because it's not on the agenda.
Correct.
I would suggest that it's up to the board. My advice is to dispense of the meeting tonight. If you're going to start doing it in two weeks, we could put it on the agenda. You could certainly meet tonight because Mr. Martin's advice was accurate.
Correct.
There is nothing foreseeable that's coming before the board in those meetings. However, I've heard your remarks regarding perception, so.
Right.
And that's certainly something that should obviously be taken into account. So I think you can meet tonight, but if, if it's your desire to make this public, then it is on the agenda tonight, so.
We'd have the most attendance tonight, given the coverage.
Absolutely. I believe we will have a great deal of people here making a public comment.
Tyree, will you be there?
Yes.
I mean, he's gonna stay with us.
I hear what you're saying, but I, you know, perception and reality are two very different things, and I think that's playing into that a little bit too much, so. Although, you know, we've been together an awful lot today, so if you want to cut that a little shorter, I'm good with that, too.
Well, I don't want to be the one who makes the dishes, so. What'd you do with thumbs? Thumbs up if you're okay for going ahead and moving forward with it tonight, right over there.
Okay.
Can you okay with that?
Okay.
All right. And then, we're adjourned.
Okay.
And we're gonna go celebrate. Mr. Martin?